Good evening and welcome to the town meeting preview for the Spring 2022 Annual Spring Town Meeting. I'm Steve Truffelli, Plymouth Town Moderator. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's forum, which is an opportunity to review, an overview of the motions that are coming before town meeting. We're joined by town meeting members. We have 135 of them, and they've been given credentials to Zoom in on a Zoom platform. In addition, they also have a V voter platform so that they can register their presence in attendance, and will take attendance a couple of times as we practice. Town meeting members can also ask questions by using the V voter platform. We also have panelists, and joining us in the panel include the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, Kevin Canty, the Chair of the Select Board, Richard Quintle, the Vice Chair, Betty Cavaco. We're also joined by Lynn Barrett. She is the Director of Finance. Michelle Braddy, she is the Director of Elder Affairs. Also Kristi Kenny, who is with us from OTI Technologies, and they support us for the V voter. And Kelsey Casey is our Library Director, and we may be joined by a few other people in the panel. I'd like to begin by saying that the presentation night on Monday will be replayed tomorrow at 3:00 P.M. This Sunday at 12:00 P.M., Wednesday next week at 7:00 P.M., and during the week of March 28th, Monday through Friday each day at noon. There'll be plenty of opportunities to watch the presentation night for those of you that may have missed it. We're going to go now to the motions, and I just also want to announce that for any of you who have a motion, please send it to me as soon as possible in order that we can help you frame it. A few town meeting members have already contacted me, and you'll be hearing from them tonight because they want to present motions. And part of the purpose of this is to provide everybody with as much information in advance so that we can all be prepared for town meeting. We're going to begin. The first motion to come before town meeting is a procedural motion. And Mr. Canty moves that all business in all sessions of this annual town meeting be commenced and conducted remotely by means of the Zoom webinar and OTI virtual voting platforms. And throughout the evening, we're going to hear from Kevin Canty, Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, in regards to this particular motion, members of town meeting, everybody knows that town meeting went into a virtual format at the beginning of the coronavirus pandemic in response to the unprecedented shutdown of all aspects of our society in relation to that. We have continued in a virtual format since the outbreak of the pandemic. That format has worked. We have been able to safely and effectively conduct the business of the town at various town meetings during the extended tendency of this pandemic as it continues. And while things do appear to be winding down in regards to the pandemic, hopefully, I mean, and I say hopefully because if the last two years have taught us anything, it's not over till it's over. But there are still real and genuine risks that many members of town meeting are facing. Several members of town meeting, many members of town meeting are in a higher risk demographic as a result of age, and that's just that one metric. We don't know the other risks that people may have regardless of their age or even on top of their age that folks may have. So there is still a continued public benefit to having the town meeting in a virtual format at this time. I did not expect when we went into a virtual format back in 2020 that we would still be in a virtual format at this time. Hopefully, this is the last time that we will be in an entirely virtual format. Legislation has been filed up at Capitol Hill to have a hybrid town meeting be legally permissible, but that legislation has not been acted on at this time. So the Town Council has opined that taking a hybrid approach to town meeting would pose potential risks in terms of the actions of town meeting. Town meeting is going to be engaging in taking out bonds, is going to be engaged in contracts, in approving the purchases and sales of different properties and projects and undertakings, all of which, if they were challenged in some way, could be potentially problematic if we had chosen a format that was impermissible under the law. So while hybrid may be in our future, and I think that would allow folks that have a continued risk going forward to engage in that and participate in town meeting regardless of that risk and allow those folks that wish to be in person to do so. That is, at the advice of Town Council, not an option that we have presently. So the current options are a physical town meeting or a remote town meeting. And because a number of town meeting members do have a higher risk, and some have reached out to the moderator about their specific risks as well, it is a recommendation at this time by all of us planning town meeting that we go forward in a virtual format. These town meetings take a long time to plan and prepare for, and this is the best opportunity to safely and responsibly get the work done. So we ask that you support this virtual format and remote participation, hopefully for the last time at this time, and that is the basis for this motion.
Thank you. And that's Kevin Canty. He is Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and he'll be presenting all of the main motions on all the articles at the Spring Special and Annual Town Meetings. It's my understanding that the Select Board is in agreement with the motions that have been presented by the Advisory and Finance Committee. The Select Board also gave notice that if town meeting does not vote to approve a remote participation, town meeting will then end promptly after the opening ceremonies on Saturday, April 2nd. And they could resume as early as April 16th, which is the date that the Select Board set in the warrant notice. I would also let town meeting know that the Board of Health did vote 5-0 unanimously to request that town meeting meet remotely. And finally, there is also state law legislation that provides for moderator authority regarding further continuances of town meeting if the moderator were to determine that to have in person would be unsafe or unhealthy. And this same motion will be coming before town meeting in the Spring Town Meeting when we adjourn the annual after the preliminary procedural matters. I do want to remind town meeting members and the public that I keep a speakers list. And so if you know in advance of town meeting that you'd like to speak on an article, then you can contact me. You can email me at fst@plymouthlaw.com. You can also call me 508-746-1464, and I'll add you to a speakers list. Now, the advantage to that is that you might be called on before there's a motion to close debate. There are some downsides insofar as it is my practice to try to give every town meeting member an opportunity to be heard before I go back to a town meeting member who's already been heard. So in this case, if you ask to be heard on this particular motion, and then later you want to be heard on Article 1, but someone else also wants Article 1, they put their name after you, but they haven't spoken, I would then call that other person. So it's an opportunity for people to kind of focus on those articles in which they want to be sure to say something during the debate deliberation. Let me know in advance. Otherwise, you can use the V voter platform and let us know that you want to be in the speakers queue for being recognized. After we vote this, if it is a majority vote, we'll continue. And the next item would be to move for the adjourn session, which would be Mr. Canty moves that adjourn session of this town meeting be held remotely on April 4th at 6:00 P.M. I would normally then go to Mr. Canty because we can have debate on any motion. Mr. Canty, anything you want to add?
No, Mr. Moderator. I believe this one is relatively self-explanatory, but thank you.
And then the next one, and occasionally I may just say to town meeting, if there is no objection, Mr. Canty moves the Plymouth Annual Spring Town Meeting be recessed until the Plymouth Special Town Meeting is adjourned or dissolved. And if I have no objections, then I will proceed to close the annual at that point after those two procedural votes, and then I will open the Special Town Meeting. So now we'll go to the Special Town Meeting motions. And again, the first is, again, the same that we just heard, that all business in all sessions of the special be commenced and conducted remotely. And I think I already may have mentioned I have two speakers who have contacted me thus far who wish to speak as part of the debate on this particular motion. Mr. Canty, any additional comments to the ones you gave previously?
No, Mr. Moderator. My previous comments would also apply in this instance, but other than that, there's nothing to add.
It's a majority vote and a roll call vote. Now, tonight is not going to be the time to debate these motions or deliberate, but it is an opportunity to ask questions. So on any of these motions, if you have a question for me, for Mr. Canty, or for one of the members of our panel, and I see we've been added Brad Brothers, the School Business Manager, also Judy Barber, who's a petitioner. So for any of these people that I've named who are on the panel, they are available also to provide you with information. Article 1A, Motion Miscellaneous D Natural Resources. Mr. Canty moves the vote to increase the wages for seasonal natural resource assistants and technicians and the natural resources officers in accordance with a memo. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 10 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1A. Approval of this article will adopt the new seasonal hourly rates for natural resources positions as outlined in the included memorandum.
It's a majority vote. They're all going to be roll called. For this one, if you have questions, you can also contact Marie Brinkman. She is the Director of Human Resources. Or David Gould, Director of Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs. And as we move on, Article 1B, Motion Miscellaneous D Recreation. And we have a motion, Mr. Canty, town vote to increase the wages for lifeguards. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 10 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1B. Approval of this article will adopt the new seasonal hourly rates for the recreational departments, seasonal lifeguards, and head lifeguards as outlined in the included memorandum.
Once again, the Director of Human Resources, Director of Community Resources are available to answer questions. I'm not seeing any questions. I am seeing that we're now joined by Tom Marr. He's the Airport Manager. Also Barry de Blasio has joined us. And at this time, we're going to continue with the next item, Article 1C, Non-Union Inspection Services. And Mr. Canty moves the town vote to create the position of an Assistant Director of Inspection Services. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1C. Approval of this article will create a new Assistant Director of Inspection Services position.
As you prepare for town meeting, again, the Director of Human Resources, Marie Brinkman is available, and also the Director of Inspection Services, Nick Mayo, is also available to provide information and answer questions. Next, we move to Article 1D, and the motion is with respect to the SEIU Local 888. And Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the SEIU Local 888 Agreement. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1D. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated memorandum of agreement for the SEIU Local 888 Bargaining Unit as outlined in the included memorandum.
Thank you. And it's again, it's a majority vote. And moving on to Article 1E, OPEIU Local 6. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the OPEIU Agreement. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1E. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated memorandum of agreement for the OPEIU Local 6 Bargaining Unit as outlined in the included memorandum.
Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, she's available to answer and provide questions, provide information along with the Director of Human Resources. And as we move on for the items under this article, we're going to look at going from item Article 1E to Article 1F. And we have a motion for Superior Officers Association. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the Plymouth Police Superior Officers Association Agreement. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1F. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated memorandum of agreement for the Superior Officers Association Bargaining Unit as outlined in the included memorandum.
Thank you. Again, the Director of Human Resources, the Director of Finance, also the Director of Planning Development, Lee Hartman, can be helpful in trying to provide information that you might request. Moving on, it's a majority vote. Article 1G is the Plymouth Police Brotherhood. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the Plymouth Police Brotherhood Agreement. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1G. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated memorandum of agreement for the Plymouth Police Brotherhood Bargaining Unit as outlined in the included memorandum.
Again, as with the others, it's a majority vote. Moving on to Article 1H Personnel Bylaws. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the personnel bylaws in accordance with a memorandum. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1H. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated personnel bylaw changes as outlined in the included memorandum.
Thank you. Majority vote. Same people available to answer questions. Article 1I, Plymouth Dispatchers Union. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the Plymouth Dispatchers Agreement. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 8 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1I. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated memorandum of agreement for the Plymouth Dispatchers Union as outlined in the included memorandum.
Majority vote. These will all be done with the V voter platform. And after the next one, we're going to actually start to use our V voter platform with attendance. But first, I'm going to go to Article 1J, the Collective Bargaining Relief Association, Cobra Library. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the Collective Bargaining Relief Association Cobra Agreement. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 8 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 1J. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated memorandum of agreement for the Cobra Library Bargaining Unit as outlined in the included memorandum.
Thank you. And we're now going to draw a deep breath as we've gotten through all of the Article 1A through J motions. We'll take each one separately. And now we're going to go to our V voter. And I'm going to ask everybody who is present as a town meeting member to now get ready to indicate that you're present. There it is on the screen, and there's the timer. You've got 20 seconds in which to register. When the clock moves now, you can start doing that. And while people are voting, I'd like to announce the town meeting preview will be replayed Saturday at 7:00 P.M. this Sunday at 9:00, 4:00, and 9:00 P.M. This Wednesday, next Wednesday at 9:30 P.M. and during the week of March 28th, Monday through Friday at 2:30. That completes the voting. And now we're going to see that we have 34 members present, and we're going to scroll through the precincts. And Precincts 1, 2, and 3, this is how you'll see it at town meeting when people vote. You'll have an opportunity to see how they voted. Precincts 4, 5, and 6. Those who are present are shown on the roll call. Precincts 7, 8, and 9. We're going to have to wake up Precinct 9. Not seeing anybody yet. As we continue, same with Precinct 10. But we're going to look at Precincts 11 and 12 and the people who are here. And we're going to continue with Precincts 13, 14, and 15. And we will take another attendance at the end. I'd like to thank all the town meeting members who are in attendance for the live presentation of the preview. And that's an example of using the V voter platform. We're now going to go to Article 2. And Mr. Canty moves the town vote to transfer $5,522 from free cash. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 10 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 2. Approval of this article will increase the fiscal year '22 operating budget for the Town Clerk's Office by $5,522 to cover expenses relative to the increase to 18 precincts from the current 15, I'm sorry, and the resulting changes to polling locations that come along with such an alteration.
Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, available to answer questions. The majority vote. We move on. Article 3, Unpaid Bills of a Prior Year. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to appropriate sum of money of $6,563.35. Mr. Canty?
In a vote of 12 to 0 with one abstention, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 3. Approval of this article will authorize the Finance Department to process the outstanding invoices for Dennis K. Burke totaling $3,323.35 on behalf of the DPW Department, and invoice to GNL Labs totaling $3,240 on behalf of the Public Health Department. The funding for these invoices will come from their respective department's current operating budgets.
Is a 9/10ths vote. One of the reasons we have the motions meeting is to review the quantum of vote. We're reminded that in an annual town meeting, the quantum of vote would be 4 fifths for unpaid bills, but for a special town meeting, it's 9/10ths. We're now going to move on, and I'm watching the V voter in case people do want to speak or have a question. Article 4A, Capital Improvements. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to appropriate the sum of $240,388. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 14 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 4. Approval of this article will authorize the general fund capital requests detailed totaling $153,388 to be funded with $953,388 coming from free cash and $100,000 from other available funds. The enterprise fund capital requests totaling $3337,000 are to be funded with $187,000 coming from the sewer retained earnings and $2250,000 from other available funds and grants.
Thank you. And people who can answer questions include the Chief of Police, the Director of the DPW, the Director of Inspection Services, and the Director of Community Resources. It's a majority vote. If you have questions tonight, you can call the Help Desk at 508-866-830-6999. And that's PAC TV Studios. We have people manning the phone. We just got a call. David Drain, Precinct 11, his vote for recognizing him as president was not recorded. Again, anyone that has questions, you can call 830-6999. Or you can also, in the chat, which is being monitored here at PAC TV Studio. At this time, we're going to go on to Article 4B1, Municipal Airport Sewerage Treatment Upgrade, Treatment Plant Upgrade. And Mr. Canty moves that the town appropriates the sum of $2250,000. Mr. Canty?
In the same unanimous vote of 14 to 0 with no abstentions that covered the rest of Article 4, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 4B1. This $2250,000 expenditure for the municipal airport sewage treatment plant upgrade will be paid from other available funds and grants.
Thomas Marr is the Airport Manager. He's with us this evening, available to answer questions between now and town meeting. Because there is borrowing involved, it's a 2/3ths vote. We're now going to move to Article 5, the Fire Station Number 5 renovation. And Mr. Canty moves the town appropriates the sum of $9,100,000. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 14 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 5. Approval of this article will authorize the substantial rehabilitation of Fire Station Number 5 in Manomet to be funded with $9,100,000 from debt and $1,529,819 from previously approved and other available funds and grants.
2/3ths vote. It involves borrowing. If you have questions, you can contact Neil Foley. He's the Fire Department Deputy Chief. Also Edward Bradley, who is the Fire Chief. And at this time, we're going to continue with Article 6. It's a solar pilot payment in lieu of taxes for 143 Hedges Pond Road. And Mr. Canty moves the town vote to authorize the Select Board and the Board of Assessors to enter into an agreement for a pilot. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 6. Approval of this payment in lieu of taxes agreement will be for personal property tax associated with a ground-mounted solar farm development located at 143 Hedges Pond Road in Plymouth, shown as Lot 53 on the assessor's map. The terms of this agreement would be $15,000 per megawatt of direct current with an escalation of 2.5% per year for 20 years. 50% of these payments will be deposited into the Environmental Affairs Fund.
Thank you. I'm going to bring in Precinct 8 Donald Williams. Mr. Williams, you can use the V voter to let me know that you want to be a speaker. Perhaps it's not working for you. But if we can bring in Precinct 8 Donald Williams, we got a call on the Help Desk that he wishes to be a speaker. And in the meantime, we had a question also from a caller wanting to know the answer, the difference between the annual town meeting and the special town meeting. I'll next go to the Chair of the Select Board following Mr. Williams and ask him if he cares to speak regarding the two town meetings. Good evening, Donald Williams.
Good evening, Steve. Thank you so much for doing this again. I had a question, two questions for Lynn Barrett regarding the last two motions, 4 and 5. The first one, I was curious as to whether there was any consideration given by the departments that at this time, major capital items are going to possibly be much more expensive to finance. I mean, we're all finding that in buying certain building materials. And the second question is, I noticed that there, I know that there's a lot of free cash left over. I think about $14 million from fall town meeting. And I'm wondering if free cash should be used to reduce the tax rate rather than maybe pay off some debts. And I know it's great to pay off debts, but this has been a couple of tough years for people. The tax rate has gone up 5.9% for this year is what the tentative is. And I'm wondering if there's a way to reduce that by moving money around in the free cash. Thank you.
Precinct 8, Town Meeting Member Donald Williams. Questions for Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. Welcome, Lynn Barrett.
Thank you, Moderator. So the first question, Don, you asked about the particular projects and if the departments have been taking into consideration the, I think, cost of goods and services. You know, in the current economy... and services, you know, in the current economy right now. And I'd have to say that most departments, when they submitted their projects, they submitted a contingency on those projects to account for some of those cost escalations. Some had contingencies more than others, but they did work with their vendors and with cost estimators on a lot of their projects. So I would hope that those costs are final and that we would be able to work with them in the future, obviously.
My point, Lynn, was though, though, excuse me, was that if we were to put this off even six months, we might get the cost down.
Yeah, I can't say that that would happen or not. I mean, if you had a crystal ball, I guess, you know, maybe that would be the case. But I think the departments want to move forward with these projects right now, and they have included contingencies for those. One thing I will say is a lot of the projects that have to be put out to bid, they won't go out to bid until probably, you know, six months from now. This particular, for example, the airport project, I don't think that's going to go out to bid until probably sometime late summer, early fall. They have to finish design. So we believe that that's probably a good timing for that project to go out to bid with construction to start next summer. But I do believe that most of the departments had considered those things. As far as the free cash, so the recommendation of the free cash is to use some of it for our capital projects that the departments feel are necessary at this time. And then also, we're using over $3 million of free cash towards the operating budget to help reduce the amount that we would have to raise from taxes. So we are considering that and using over $3 million in reducing the amount that we would have to take from property taxes.
Thank you, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. At this time, I'm going to now move back. So the question from a caller was, what is the difference between the special and annual town meeting? And I'd like to first go to Richard Quintle, the Chair of Select Board. It's the Select Board that sets the warrant. And so we have a warrant on the annual, and then the Select Board also decided to create a warrant for a special. Mr. Quintle, what can you tell us? And you're muted, Mr. Quintle. You can unmute yourself. Thank you. Good evening.
All right. It's my belief that the difference is the special is funded immediately, and the regular isn't funded until July.
Okay, good. And at this time, we're going to continue on. We had the Article Six, and now we're going to look at Article Seven, which is a pilot for Holtek. Mr. Canty moves town vote to authorize Select Board to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation to allow the town to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes with Holtek. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of eleven to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Seven. Approval of this article will authorize the town to submit special legislation to the state to clarify the town's legal ability to enter into a pilot agreement with the owners of the nuclear power plant, now that the plant has ceased active operation. The town is hopeful that this will allow the community to receive additional compensation for the burden of housing the spent nuclear fuel beyond what is possible through current property tax assessment provisions.
Thank you. And again, a majority vote and a roll call vote. And we do receive another call. Town E member, Precinct Ten, Bob Trosel. Welcome, Bob. Bob has been with us, but he failed to sign into V voter, which is why his vote didn't register. That's one of the reasons we do these practice votes, if you will, for attendance, to help get the kinks out before town meeting. So for any of you who are town meeting members who have not yet signed into V voter, please do so. There'll be another opportunity to indicate your attendance. We're now going to go to Article Eight, Affordable Housing. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to transfer care, custody, management, control for a parcel of land. It's a two-thirds vote. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Eight. Approval of this article will transfer the indicated parcel located at 31 Strand Ave from the Town Treasurer to the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority to construct a single-family dwelling to be added to the town's affordable housing stock.
Thank you. And this is a two-thirds vote. And David Golden is the Director of the Redevelopment Authority, and he's available to provide information. Articles Nine, Ten, and Eleven are withdrawn from the warrant of the special town meeting. We do have a motion for Article Ten. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to authorize Select Board to appropriate $1,826,612 to the Pavement Management Plan Debt Stabilization Fund. Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twelve. Approval of this article will authorize the town to transfer $1,826,612 from free cash to the Pavement Management Plan Debt Stabilization Fund for future use as it relates to road repair, maintenance, and/or construction in the town. This amount is the excess of actual motor vehicle excise receipts over the amount budgeted for fiscal year twenty-one. The current balance in the fund is $2,729,325. As with all stabilization funds, a two-thirds vote of town meeting would be required for any future withdrawals from the stabilization fund.
This time, we're going to bring in Precinct Eight, Town Meeting Member Geraldine Williams. She's used our V voter platform. She's clicked on to speak on the motion. And if we can bring her in, again, this is not for debate or for deliberation, but it is for asking questions to gather information in preparation for town meeting. So town meeting members do have the opportunity to notify the moderator through the V voter platform. I have several monitors here in front of me, and one of them tells me who wishes to be heard. So we're going to bring her in. From Precinct Eight is Geraldine Williams. And while we do, I want you to know that also, for the replays, PAC TV does a video share channel on YouTube, and also video on demand at the PAC TV website, which is pactv.org/vod. Welcome Geraldine Williams. Good evening.
Good evening. I have a question about this. If we already have $2,729,000 in this fund, and it can't be spent without an authorization of two-thirds vote of town meeting, the next time we would be able to vote this would be next fall's town meeting. And we would now have, you know, three and a half, over three and a half million dollars in this fund that is just sitting there, not able to be spent. And I'm just wondering whether there has, is money being taken out of this fund to pay for some things in this current budget, or so that there won't be 2.7 million at the end, or whether there will be a total of three and a half million if we vote to approve this?
Thank you. And that is Precinct Eight Geraldine Williams. Question for Lynn Barrett. Lynn is the Director of Finance, and we have been discussing on the special town meeting warrant, Article Twelve, a Pavement Management Stabilization Fund. We're going to bring in Lynn Barrett now from the panel. And here she is. Welcome back, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you. Geraldine, the purpose of this fund is to set aside these funds to pay for the principal and interest on the pavement management program that the DPW has before them. So they've, they've done two programs of $5 million apiece. And this money in this fund is used to pay the principal and interest on those programs. So in Article Seven of the annual town meeting, the budget article, when we vote our debt service, we'll be voting to transfer some money out of this fund to pay for that principal and interest on those two programs. So we are using, you know, the fund every year to pay the principal and interest. And then we want it to build up so that it can continue to pay for that program's, you know, principal and interest every year, so that we can continue to vote at least a $5 million allotment to the DPW for road, for road pavement management program at least every two years. That's the plan. Okay?
Thank you. That explains it. I didn't want to see that money sitting there that we couldn't spend.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, Precinct Eight, Town E Member Geraldine Williams, asking questions on Article Thirteen. Again, a reminder to all of you who might be speaking, when you're not speaking, you might want to mute. And also, when you are called on as a speaker, please turn off any TV, any radio, or anything else that might interfere with our ability to be able to hear you. And at this point, we're going to continue with the special town meeting warrant with Article Fourteen. It's a motion to amend the airport zoning map, and that motion to amend is moved by Kevin Canty, Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Fourteen. Approval of this article will amend the official zoning map, number one, to rezone these five lots indicated from airport to medium lot residential R25, and place these five lots within the medium lot residential district, thereby making them conforming residential lots for zoning purposes.
Vote. It's a zoning bylaw, so it's two-thirds. And the Director of Planning and Development, Lee Hartman, will be available between now and town meeting. I'd also like to welcome our new town manager, Derek Brindisi, who has also joined us as a panelist this evening. Now, at this time, in the special town meeting, unless there are any other motions to come before us, such as to reconsider a vote, Mr. Canty would be moving to dissolve the town meeting. And I want to explain to town meeting members what that means. It causes some finality to your actions. And by that, I mean, once you have a motion to dissolve, you could debate it. And once we vote it, if it passes, that's it. You can't go back and revisit or reconsider an article. So it's something to keep in mind, because even though we continue with the annual town meeting, if you dissolve the special, then you can't go back to the special. It is possible to keep it open. It's possible to recess it, go to the annual, come back in the special. But at this point, the plan would be to move to dissolve it, and then all of your action be final. And then, Mr. Canty would move to reopen the annual town meeting. If there's no objection, I would take that as a motion to reopen. And for Article, let me just see here. I guess, one thing I want to go back to is Article Thirteen, the Facility Capital Maintenance Stabilization Fund. One of the reasons we do this is to make sure we get it right by the time we do town meeting. So in that, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to authorize the Select Board to appropriate $2,500,000 for the Facility Capital Maintenance Stabilization. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Thirteen. Approval of this article will authorize the town to transfer $2,500,000 from free cash to the Facility Capital Maintenance Stabilization Fund for future use as it relates to capital maintenance of town-owned buildings. The current balance in the fund is $2,506,728. As with all stabilization funds, a two-thirds vote of town meeting would be required for any future withdrawals from the stabilization fund.
Thank you. But for the motion at town meeting, it'll be a majority vote. And Lynn Barrett, again, the Director of Finance, will be available. And if there are no other questions, I'm now going to move on to the annual town meeting. And once we've moved to reopen it, Article One, no motion, we have no action. Article Two, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to receive the reports of several boards, officers, and committees in the town. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Two. Approval of this article will allow boards and committees to place their reports on file with the town clerk. Most board and committee reports can be found in the annual town report.
Thank you. It's a majority vote. Article Three has to do with revolving fund spending limits. And Mr. Canty moves the town vote to establish the maximum amount that may be spent from each fund during fiscal year 2023. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Three. Approval of this article will set the fiscal year 2023 spending caps for each of the revolving funds listed herein pursuant to Massachusetts general laws.
Has a spreadsheet. It's a majority vote. Article Four is a motion to continue committees. And Mr. Canty moves the town vote to authorize pursuant to Chapter 173 of the general bylaws, authorize the Cedarville Steering Committee, Plymouth Center Steering Committee. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Four. Approval of this article will authorize the Cedarville Steering Committee and the Plymouth Center Steering Committee to continue with a further review in three years at the 2025 annual town meeting.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to go to Precinct Twelve. We have Town Meeting Member Albert DiNardo is using his V voter function, and he's asked to speak on the motion. So we're going to bring him in. We're now in the annual town meeting motions, and we're going through the warrant chronologically. I don't have any motions to change the order while we're waiting to bring him in. Let's see if he's with us yet. No, I don't see him. So town meeting is going to be live Saturday, April 2 on Comcast, Channel 15, Verizon, Channel 47, online at pactv.org/live. We're bringing in Precinct Twelve, Albert DiNardo. He is a town meeting member, and I can see him now on the screen. He's being brought in. Mr. DiNardo, you are muted. So if you can unmute yourself as you're brought in to the studio to speak to those of us who are participating in tonight's town meeting preview, which is coming to you live March 24, 2022. And we begin at 6 o'clock. And Mr. DiNardo is up on the screen. Mr. DiNardo, if you can unmute yourself so we can hear you. And there you are. We can see you. And just at the bottom of your screen, you might have an icon to click to unmute yourself. Look for a microphone where you can unmute, press at the bottom probably. He's having technical problems, he says. So, Mr. DiNardo, you can call the help desk, 508-830-6999, and they can help you. I just know that usually to, I'm seeing a button that you muted. So we'll come back to Mr. DiNardo when he figures, when he works on the technical issues. Article Five is withdrawn. Article Six, the salary of elected, salaries of elected town officials, Mr. Canty moves the town vote pursuant to general laws to authorize annual stipend and salaries of elected officials. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Six. Approval of this article will set the annual stipends for the Select Board and town moderator. There are no changes to the stipend amounts this year.
And that's also a majority vote. We'll bring back in Mr. DiNardo once he has been able to unmute himself. And again, Mr. DiNardo usually, I don't know if any help here from the studio where the mute button might show with his zoom.
Lower right-hand corner.
Lower right-hand corner, Mr. DiNardo. I'm being told if you click on, maybe just put your finger, the lower right-hand corner of your screen. All right. But this is good because it's giving us an opportunity to work out the kinks. Perhaps you can call call, uh, the help desk at the studio. Perhaps they can walk you through it. Uh, Article 7A, the General Fund Operating Budget. We're going to go through each of the subcommittee reports, uh, which is the way in which we're going to vote, uh, at town meeting. And we're going to begin with Article 7A Subcommittee Report A. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report A.
Is a majority vote, and, uh, all of these will be roll call. Questions can be answered by the Director of Finance, Lynn Barrett. Uh, now, under this article, I have a motion to amend. If we can bring in Precinct Eight, Paul Cunningham, if he is with us. Uh, the motion to amend, which I received, uh, and all of you town meeting members should have received an email with the motions. If you don't have them all, uh, check your spam filter, check your junk, uh, mailbox. And if not, uh, check with Jeanette White, the, uh, Secretary to the Advisory and Finance Committee. But, uh, Mr. Cunningham, uh, did provide me with a motion. He moves the town vote to decrease Item Two, Charter Commission, all other expenses, uh, by $12,000. Uh, do we have Mr. Cunningham with us this evening? Uh, and Mr. Cunningham can explain, uh, the motion that he is presenting, uh, to town meeting. Uh, I'm not sure if he was.
You need to accept the request. We requested him to.
Yes, to. So we've made a request, Mr. Cunningham, and you need to accept the request in order to be brought in, uh, to speak, uh, to town meeting. So, uh, Mr. Cunningham has made this motion. So the way this will work is, uh, we'll first put the main motion on the floor. I'll also, for the sake of discussion, put the motion to amend on the floor. And then, once Mr. Canty speaks to the main motion, Mr. Cunningham speaks to the motion to amend, then we'll have debate. But when someone moves to close debate, to move the previous question, if that is successful and debate ends, we would then vote on the motion to amend. And I see that we have Mr. Cunningham with us. Uh, good evening, Mr. Cunningham. Would you like to explain, uh, your motion to amend without arguing it, just really for point of information for town meeting members? Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I, yes, I would like to. I hadn't planned on it tonight, but, uh, I can't find my papers that I supplied the information to you with, the original. But from the top of my head, that was a, uh, excessive expansion of a budget for previous, uh, charter commissions have, uh, needed to use. And even from the estimates from last year of, it was a, like a 285% increase. Now, they've come out, uh, in favor and by voice and by writing in the OCM newspaper that they don't plan to change this form of government, which, um, is unusual because of, uh, I think nobody else at this size has ever continued with it. But anyways, um, the, so there's not, doesn't need a big explanation to the people. They've lived with this form of government for a long number of years. I can't name the exact amount. So, um, I'm sure there'll be, uh, some highlights that can be written up and, um, and provided to the people that made changes in various aspects of it in trying to solve the problems that this, uh, form of government has at this size, 64,000 people. So that's the reason for it. It was, uh, they were planning on doing full-page ads and this, that, and the other. If they were changing the government, I could understand it. The people would have to understand a major change, which all these other towns have done. So that's the reason for that. I didn't attempt to wipe out all their advertising, but just to bring it under control. Thank you.
Thank you. Precinct Eight, Paul Cunningham, on his motion to amend. And as I said earlier, once there's a motion to close debate, we would vote that as to whether or not to close it. If we then close debate, we would vote on the motion to amend. Then we'd go back to the main motion until everyone has had a chance to speak, or until there's another motion to close debate. And so, again, any of you who are watching that have motions, uh, please do as Mr. Cunningham did. Send them to me so we can get them printed up and sent out to town meeting members next week when we send out the final revised motion book. Uh, at this time, we're going to continue with Article 7A, the motion for the Subcommittee Report B1. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 11 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget. This recommendation incorporates both Budget Subcommittee B's original recommendation as detailed in their report, and a subsequent March 3rd, 2022 amendment of that recommendation to increase the fiscal year 23 salary reserve budget by $2,339,307 to fund the collective bargaining agreements contained in Article One of the special town meeting that was heard earlier.
Lynn Barrett.
It was settled after our budget hearing.
Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, available to answer questions. A majority vote. Uh, we're gonna, uh, continue on, uh, with Article 7A, the motion for the Subcommittee Report B2. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Contained in the same unanimous vote of 11 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends you approve this motion as well. This is being separated out because it is a transfer, uh, from the Pavement Management Stabilization Fund and therefore requires a higher quantum of vote.
Thank you. And that'll be a two-thirds vote. Next, uh, Article 7A, Subcommittee Report B3. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the same unanimous 11 to zero with no abstention vote, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends you approve this motion as well. This is also a transfer from a stabilization fund and therefore has a higher quantum of vote than the main motion for Subcommittee Report B.
And that's a two-thirds vote, uh, on the Subcommittee Report B3. Uh, we're going to move on to Article 7A, Subcommittee Report C. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report C.
And again, questions for the Director of Finance, Lynn Barrett, and it's a majority vote. Subcommittee Report D. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Budget Subcommittee Report D.
And next, we're going to move on to Subcommittee Report E, and we have motions. First, Mr. Canty's motion. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report E.
And next, we have a motion, and, uh, Betsy Hall, Precinct 12, moves to divide Subcommittee E with items 54 to 56, uh, from Subcommittee E to be separate, uh, from the rest of the motion. It's debatable. Town meeting members have an opportunity, uh, to hear from Betsy Hall. And, uh, if Betsy is with us this evening, Precinct 12, Betsy Hall, we can bring her in and invite her to make any other comments, uh, she wants to make without arguing, uh, her motion, uh, but rather explaining why she's making the motion. Uh, Betsy Hall, I can see you. You're unmuted. I don't, and there you are. Uh, what would you like to tell us about your motion to divide?
Thank you, Steve. I've never argued in my life, so, as you know. Um, I am, um, asking that we, uh, look at the library budget separately, um, because of the addition of the librarian. I would like to have an actual presentation. I don't think we have a lot of information or justification yet for adding this employee. And I take adding a, a new employee in any department very seriously. So I would just like to have all of town meeting here a presentation from the library staff. And I do have a certain number of questions. I, I will send them to Barry, um, that I would like to have answered during that presentation so that all the town meeting members can hear those answers.
Thank you, Betsy Hall. And, uh, actually, we're going to have for you this evening a brief, uh, presentation because we're going to invite Kelsey Casey, the Library Director, who is on our panel, uh, to provide further information, uh, to Betsy Hall and to town meetings. Let's bring in Kelsey Casey, uh, Library Director. While we're doing that, I wanted to explain to Mr. DiNardo, uh, Mr. DiNardo, you could call in at 508-830-3971, which is our call-in number this evening. Uh, for, oh, I see he's got, uh, he's unmuted.
It may be good. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. But we're going to first hear from Kelsey Casey, and then we're going to go to you.
Okay.
Good evening, Kelsey Casey.
Good evening. Um, so in the Finance Committee Report, you can see our justification for adding a new library position. Our reference department currently fields about 1,000 questions a month. Um, in addition to that, they provide book orders for 30 book clubs a month. Um, they staff the local history room, which obviously is Plymouth. Um, we have a robust local history collection. Uh, they process dozens of interlibrary loans, our book swaps for our senior, um, living facilities, oversee the public computers, maintain the website, and we assist patrons with disabilities, provide quality programming, and provide readers' advisory. So, all of those jobs, um, take a lot of time, and having another librarian in that department would help us serve, um, the population that we have now. We have not added a new position since 2002.
Thank you, Kelsey Casey. And Ms. Casey, I'm going to ask if you could be in touch with Mr. Young to help you with your audio. Uh, you came through in a little bit of a, a gravelly voice, but, uh, we could understand what you had to say. So, again, uh, to Betsy Hall and town meeting members, uh, you certainly can contact, uh, Kelsey Casey, uh, for further information as we prepare for town meeting. Uh, and if the motion to divide passes, uh, then Mr. Canty would move separately, uh, to raise and appropriate $1,969,252 for the library. And we would debate that and vote it. And then that would be separate from the other amount, which I believe is $2,87129. Uh, any further questions this time, uh, Betsy Hall? You're muted, Betsy Hall. If you can unmute yourself. We're all practicing.
Thank you. I will send my questions to Kelsey, and hopefully they can be answered on town meeting floor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And before we continue any further, and before we lose Mr. DiNardo, Mr. DiNardo, welcome, uh, to the town meeting preview. And, uh, what did you want to speak about?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, thank you. If you would allow me just to be very brief. Uh, first of all, I did, I wanted to go on record, I did attend the last meeting. I could not access the V voter system. I tried using that on an Android. I invested in a new iPad. And I thank you for this tonight to just kind of get us up and going because I am a new member, and everything seems to be working fine. But just very quick, there was, I just want to add to, uh, this question about special town meeting. In Plymouth, we have two business meetings, or two town meetings set in stone. The one we're about to have and the one in October. Anything other than that is called a special. There's not anything special about it, other than the fact it's not those two other meetings. Uh, and from, my guess is that this warrant was probably closed in December of the, of the annual. And we had to have a special as a vehicle to assemble these articles. And it's just really a parliamentary move. So I don't want people to, I just wanted to expand on that. So technically, we can call a special at any time. If the citizen were to get 200 signatures on a resolution to call world peace, the Select Board has to call a special within 45 days. So specials can happen any time of the year, as long as we meet that criteria. So I just wanted to say that, and I wanted to make sure I was up and running. So thank you.
Thank you, Albert DiNardo. You are up and running because I recognized you, uh, when you used the V voter platform, speak on the motion. Uh, Mr. DiNardo is a new town meeting member, but not new to town meeting. Uh, I've had several conversations with him. He is an experienced member of town meeting from a community north of Plymouth, uh, but he's now with us, and we're happy to welcome him, uh, to Plymouth Town Meeting. Uh, we're going to continue on, uh, 7A, Subcommittee Report F. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report F.
It's a majority vote. And, uh, again, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, is available to answer questions. We then will move on in our annual town meeting warrant to the motion for 7B, Subcommittee G. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report G's Water Enterprise section.
And, uh, again, a majority vote. Lynn Barrett available to answer questions. We'll continue on. Article 7C is the Sewer Enterprise Operating Budget Subcommittee G. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report G's Sewer Enterprise section.
Article 7D is the Solid Waste Enterprise Operating Budget Subcommittee G. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report G's Solid Waste Enterprise.
And Article 7E is the Airport Enterprise Operating Budget Subcommittee G. Mr. Canty?
In unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report G's Airport Enterprise section.
Finally, under Article 7F, Cable Access Enterprise Operating Budget Subcommittee G. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report G's Cable Public Access Enterprise section.
This completes the motions under Article 7. There will not be a final main motion because we voted each part separately. Uh, and we're now going to continue with the warrant. Article Eight has been withdrawn. Article Nine, uh, capital improvements. And we have several motions, uh, from Mr. Canty under Article Nine, the first one being 9A. And Mr. Canty moves the town appropriate the sum of $5,892,291. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 14 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve this portion of Article Nine. The acting town manager recommended $18,593,292 worth of capital items requested for fiscal year 23. This sub-motion deals with a portion of them. The Advisory and Finance Committee is in agreement with the recommendation of the then-acting town manager and recommends town meeting approve this.
The eight items are a majority vote, and we have a number of people who would be available depending on which item. Uh, our IT Director, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, uh, the Business Manager for the School, the DPW Director, uh, also, uh, David Gould, Director, and the Airport Manager. And they're all available to answer questions. We're going to move to Article 9B1, which is the School HVAC Replacement. Mr. Canty?
In a, in the same unanimous vote of 14 to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve this portion of Article Nine in relation to Motion B1 as well. This particular portion deals with the appropriation of $1 million to pay the cost of school HVAC replacement and the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
This is a two-thirds vote. It involves, um, some borrowing. And, uh, Brad Brothers is the Business Manager for the schools. Christine Renaud is the Facilities Director. They're available to answer questions. And we'll move on to 9B2, Court Street and Cherry Street Traffic Signal Improvement Engineering. Mr. Canty?
In the same unanimous vote of 14 to zero with no abstentions, Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve this portion of Article Nine as well. This portion deals with the appropriation of $2,700,000 to pay costs of engineering in connection with traffic signal improvements at Court and Cherry Streets.
So two-thirds vote. Uh, Sheila Scarsy is our Town Engineer, available to answer questions. Also, the DPW Director, Jonathan Beeter, Article 9B3, Water Infrastructure Improvements. Mr. Canty? Also the DPW Director Jonathan Beeter, Article nine B three, Water Infrastructure Improvements, Mr. Canty.
As part of the same unanimous fourteen to zero with no abstention votes, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve this portion of Article nine as well. This portion deals with a five million two hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred thousand dollar project to pay costs of water infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. This is a two-thirds vote as well. Jonathan Beeter, Director of Department of Public Works. I'd like to also mention that at town meeting, we'll have Town Council Mark Rich, uh, who'll be in studio. Also people, two people from OTI Technologies will be on site as well as Nicole Manfredi, uh, the Assistant Town Moderator, and she'll be heading up also uh, the Tech Buddies. Who'll be available at Plymouth North. If someone uh, needs tech support, uh, you can make arrangements through uh, Nicole Manfredi, Assistant Town Moderator. Article ten, Public and Unaccepted Road and Bridge Improvements, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of eleven to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article ten. Town meeting approval of this article will provide for the road maintenance and paving needs as determined by the DPW's current road program priority list. This article will once again fund three point five million dollars for public roads and one point five million dollars for unaccepted roads and will be utilized for and spent during the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three construction season.
Again, once again, this is a two-thirds vote. And uh, at this time, we're going to move to Article eleven, which is withdrawn. So we go to Article twelve, Chapter ninety funds, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article twelve. Approval of this article will enable the town to accept state highway Chapter ninety funds for repairs and reconstruction of public roads. While the estimated amount of Chapter ninety funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three was not known at the time this report was prepared, Plymouth did receive more than one point five million dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. And the town expects a similar amount for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, unless there is a change in policy and/or the state's financial health.
Majority vote. Will we go on to Article thirteen, Town Promotion Fund, Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of eleven to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article thirteen. Approval of this article will allow expenditures from the town's promotion fund. The promotion fund created by special legislation is funded with forty-five percent of the receipts from the hotel motel tax. The Visitor Services Board oversees expenditures from this fund. Expenditures include funding special events and celebrations. The Town Promotion Fund is also used to pay a marketing and promotions contract with C Plymouth slash Destination Plymouth, which provides the town with television and print advertising around the country, maintains a waterfront information booth, and provides access to the C Plymouth website.
Majority vote. Article fourteen is to amend a bylaw for Agricultural Commission. Uh, and we can go to Patrick Farah, the Playing Technician for questions. But now we'll go to Mr. Canty, your comments.
In a unanimous vote of thirteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article fourteen. Approval of this article will amend the town's general bylaws, Section sixty-three, Right to Farm, consistent with the vote taken at the two thousand twenty-one Fall Town Meeting, which changed the Agricultural Committee to an Agricultural Commission and will further define the composition, responsibilities, and duties of the commission going forward, consistent with Plymouth's needs and state statutes and regulations.
Majority vote. Article fifteen is withdrawn. Article sixteen deals with the Community Preservation. Articles are motions and the first one, Stevens Field Land Development Supplemental Appropriation, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of eleven to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article sixteen A. Approval of this article will provide supplemental funding for Article sixteen B of the two thousand fifteen Spring Annual Town Meeting to include the final design, engineering, construction, and oversight for the restoration and rehabilitation of the Stevens Field Modified Plan as approved by the Stevens Field Planning and Design Committee.
So two-thirds vote. William Kohan is the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and he'll be available to answer questions on all of the Articles sixteen Community Preservation uh, motions. Article sixteen B, Jenny Pond Dredging, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article sixteen B. Approval of this article will allow the restoration of Jenny Pond to improve the ecological health and recreational opportunities at Jenny Pond through a limited dredging project.
So two-thirds vote. Article sixteen C, uh, Fiscal two thousand twenty-three Annual Budget. And it's a motion for Mr. Canty, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article sixteen C. Town meeting approval of this article will allow the Community Preservation Committee to allocate ten percent of the estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for future spending in each of the following areas, open space, historic resources, and community housing. Additionally, four percent of the estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Act will be set aside for funding administrative and operational expenses, and an amount will be set aside for interest expense on debt. The balance of the annual CPA revenue will be held as a reserve balance, which can be used for any CPA purpose at any future town meetings.
It's a majority vote. On Monday evening of presentation night, Mr. Canty reminded us that he and his committee have worked hard to present materials. They include the report and recommendations of the special town meeting, the report and recommendations of the annual town meeting, also the general government proposed operating budget. And you're reminded that we are governed by our parliamentary authority, Town Meeting Time. Uh, there are copies uh, at the library available uh, for you. And at this time, we're going to move to Article seventeen is to amend the zoning bylaw, two oh three dash three signs, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of eleven to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article seventeen. Approval of this article will amend the zoning bylaws by repealing the existing Section two oh three dash three signs and replace it with a new section, also called two oh three dash three signs. The full text of this amendment is on the town's website, per the above URL in our report.
Ms. Director of Planning Development, available to answer questions, two-thirds vote. Article eighteen will be the planning and permitting of Long Beach Pier, Mr. Canty.
In a vote of ten to two with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article eighteen. Approval of this article will support the planning and permitting costs for the construction of a pier, seasonal gangway with support lift and associated float to provide recreational opportunities for the public to include increased boat and fishing access on the northwest side of Plymouth Long Beach that otherwise isn't easily available and accessible.
This is one of several petitioned articles. William Abbott, Town Meeting Member, is the petitioner. He's available along with David Ghul, Director of Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs. They can provide information, answer questions. Move to Article nineteen, another petitioned article, Plimpton Road ADA Compliance Sidewalks, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of eleven to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article nineteen. Approval of this article will allow the town of Plymouth to coordinate with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the design and construction of ADA compliance sidewalks along Route eighty, otherwise known as Plimpton Road, between Commerce Way and Kristen Road, and provide safe passage for students, pedestrians, and bicyclists along this section of Route eighty.
Uh, we have a couple of people who want to speak. Uh, we're going to begin with Precinct eleven, uh, David Drain. If we can bring in David Drain, followed by Precinct six, Maureen Renaud on deck. So we're going to bring the two of them in as we uh, continue uh, with the warrant for the annual town meeting. And uh, I see uh, that we have our group of panelists. And we're going to bring in uh, these two speakers, uh, Town Meeting Members, uh, who are going to be uh, joining us now as uh, panelists for the opportunity uh, to speak and ask questions. Uh, this is the Town Meeting Preview coming to you live on March twenty-fourth. We began uh, at six o'clock. We're in our second hour as we've gone through the special uh, Town Meeting Warrant, and we are now moving through the annual Town Meeting Warrant. And I see that we brought Mr. Drain in. He is a Precinct eleven Town Meeting Member. And David Drain, as you connect, if you could unmute, you have, uh, go ahead and speak, Mr. Drain.
Oh, yes, I'm somewhat confused about this article. I don't understand how we got to the one point five million dollar estimate or where the money is coming from.
Last day of work.
All right, so uh, he has a question. And uh, we have uh, Mr. Canty moving, but we also have the petitioner available to answer questions as well as Brigida Keen, and she's the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I do see uh, the petitioner is with us. If we can bring in Judy Barber, if you can unmute yourself. Uh, do you care to respond to Town Meeting David Drain on his question?
Yeah.
Judy Barber.
The um, the one point five million is the amount that the DPW provided us that it would cost to have this project completed. And I understand the motion of how that would be framed and and financed is handled through the this process right here.
I'm going to take a shower from gym class.
Thank you. Uh, does that answer your question, Mr. Drain?
Excuse me, does that include design and construction or design only?
Ms. Barber.
Entire project.
Thank you.
All right. Where's the money coming from?
Ms. Barber.
Yes, it's from, it's to be uh, borrowed, but the principal and interest, as I understand it, would be coming from the tax rate over a fifteen-year period. That's my understanding.
It is a two-thirds vote for borrowing, yes. Mr. Drain, any other questions?
Uh, not right now.
Thank you. Maureen Renaud, I see that we brought you in. Uh, you're connecting. If you can unmute yourself uh, for your questions. Good evening and welcome, Maureen.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Um, I uh, have a request from another Town Meeting Member who couldn't make it. And he would like to make a motion to amend this article.
Okay.
And I hate, is that, is that appropriate?
No, not at this moment.
Okay, that's, that's all right. I'll skip it now.
But, but, but what I would like to say uh, to you to uh, kind of to, if you can communicate to this town meeting member, if the town meeting member could contact me, five oh eight seven four six one four six four, or email me, F S T at PlymouthLaw dot com. I would have to look at the motion. And it's excellent that we're starting this soon because when you have borrowing, we have bond counsel. And so any motion that we have has to be approved in advance by bond counsel. In fact, I wouldn't take a motion on the day of town meeting if it involves borrowing and changing the bond counsel approved language. So, you know, on, on the day of town meeting, it would be voted up or down, either yes or no. But because you're alerting us in advance, uh, I would say that Town Meeting Member could contact me tomorrow to give us enough time to receive it and send it to bond counsel. Again, F S T at PlymouthLaw dot com. And very briefly, uh, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, if you could further elaborate, since you are the one who directly deals with bond counsel, if you could explain why it's important to have exact language in motions for borrowing.
Yeah, so we would want to make sure that the language of the motion to amend is appropriate and that it would if, if the motion is to, you know, do the project and still be borrowing, we want to make sure that the language is appropriate to authorize to borrow. So bond counsel always has to review that language and approve it prior to town meeting.
Thank you, Lynn Barrett. And I would just say further, in some communities, surprisingly enough, some of the votes of town meeting are later overturned or they're improper and they can't be uh, enacted. In our town meeting, we all work very hard in advance to be prepared so that when we vote, our votes are good and they won't be challenged. So um, thank you very much for bringing that up. It's a good teaching moment for all of town meeting. And I don't have any other speakers on the speaker's queue. Uh, this is a two-thirds vote. Uh, Judy Barber, oh, Maureen Renaud, go ahead. Next question.
Have another, but, can I have another bite at the apple here? Um, this is a, a different person.
Go ahead.
So, uh, actually Judy had been re- reached out to me and wanted me to ask about this. She had talked to uh, Jonathan Beeter, who was um, you know, very um, uh, responsive. And he had felt, and again, I have to read this, okay? And it's very, very, very short. It's about who's going to take care of the sidewalk as far as plowing in the, in the winter. And she's, and Jonathan had said it was a good question, and typically all operational responsibilities would fall upon Mass DOT. However, this, if this were to be approved by town meeting, it would need to be addressed during permitting of the work. He also says that the DPW is not really equipped in terms of staffing and equipment to add this section of sidewalk to our list of responsibilities. Just, just throwing it out there.
So is that a question, Maureen, that you'd like answered?
Um, yeah, actually, I'll turn it into a question.
Because we're not going to debate, we're not going to argue why to vote for or against. But if you're asking a question, uh, we'll see if we can get it answered.
The question would be, could that also be a motion, women?
Oh, could it be a motion to amend? Again, if there's going to be a motion, uh, I'd have to see it. But again, we're going to be, have to be very careful when this borrowing. And in this case, if for any reason I don't accept a motion because it's not accepted by bond counsel, then the maker of the motion would have still the option to argue in favor or against the main motion, even though it's not amended. But we'll certainly try and do what we can to work with whoever it is who wants to make a motion.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Maureen Renaud. She brings up another good point, which is uh, Town Meeting Members can make motions, but members in her precinct could also contact her. And on behalf of a motion, uh, member in her precinct constituent, she could make a motion, even if it were not her motion. So uh, again, uh, one last uh, question uh, to the petitioner. Judy Barber, was there anything else that you wanted to explain about uh, Article nineteen, the motion that's before town meeting?
No, I have no comment at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Judy Barber and others who have participated. We're going to move on now to Article twenty, Prohibit Fewer Product Fur Products, uh, Mr. Canty.
In a vote of twelve to one with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article twenty. Approval of this article will prohibit the sale of nearly all fur products in the town of Plymouth with limited exceptions such as fur used in religious practices, taxidermy products, leather, cowhide, and/or sheepskin, to name a few.
The petitioner is Lauren Nazarella. She's available to answer questions uh, between now and town meeting. It is a majority vote. It is debatable. And uh, Precinct two, Richard Cirque. If we can bring in uh, Mr. Cirque from Precinct two. After we complete Article twenty, there would be a motion to dissolve. But instead of dissolving, uh, we're going to instead vote uh, our attendance again and practice with the V voter and see who's joined us. Right now, we're bringing in Precinct two, Richard Cirque. I know that because Mr. Cirque has used the V voter. And so on my monitor to my left, I see his name. I see his precinct. I see what he wants. He wants to speak on the motion. He could do a point of order. Uh, he could question the quorum. Are there any number of functions uh, that can be done uh, with the V voter? But Mr. Cirque has indicated that uh, he wants to speak on the motion. So we welcome uh, Mr. Cirque as we bring uh, him in uh, to our group of panelists. And again, following this, uh, we will go to attendance on the V voter and uh, have a roll call as to town meeting members who are present with us. So we're here. So we're here at PACT TV Studio, as we will be at Town Meeting on Saturday, April 2 at 8 a.m. We see Mr. Cirque. If you can unmute yourself, Richard Cirque, we can see you. Good evening and welcome.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I just had a technical question for Mr. Canty. When he spoke, he stated that the Finance Committee voted 12 to 1 to 0, and that's what's printed on page 25 of the booklet. But on the chart on page 16, it said the vote was 13 to 0 to 0. And I just wanted to know which is, which is the correct vote.
Thank you, Mr. Cirque. You're paying attention to detail. What a surprise, Mr. Canty. How would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the, the quantum of vote that I read out is the accurate quantum of vote.
Thank you.
Hey, so there's, there's one member of the Finance Committee who, who voted no.
That's correct. Do you want to know who that member was?
Yeah, just for curiosity.
It was Gail Butler.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, and not seeing any further questions at this time, we would be moving to dissolve the annual, but instead, we're going to take attendance. So if we can bring that up on the screen, Town Meeting Members, you see right here, press 1, select the green button. You're going to see a timer, and 20 seconds, you'll be able to vote. And voting can begin now. Please indicate whether you're present while they're voting. Again, this, the Town Meeting Presentation Night on Monday replays this Friday at 3, Sunday at 12, next Wednesday at 7, during the week of March 28, every day at 12 noon. And this preview that week will be Monday through Friday at 2:30 p.m. That completes the vote. We're going to show the vote, 32 having indicated they are present. Precincts 1, 2, and 3, you can see, are shown here on the screen. At Town Meeting, this is how you'll see it. You'll see it in groups of three precincts, 4, 5, and 6. At Town Meeting, when we have votes, green will be yes, and red will be no, yellow will be abstention. Right now, we're seeing present 7, 8, and 9. We're going to scroll through the precincts at Town Meeting throughout the day. We'll continue on with Town Meeting 10, 11, and 12, with the Town Meeting Members who are present. And those of you who are watching, get to see those who participated, finally 13, 14, and 15. I'd like to thank all of the people who are here this evening helping us out. Christine Kinney from OTI, Julie Thompson, the Executive Director for PACT TV, is our Floor Director. And in the studio control room, we have Dustin Fleming and Dave.
Antoine and Mark McKinley.
And Mark McKinley and Dave Antoine, all helping us out this evening. I'd like to thank all of the members of the panel who are here throughout this preview. And before we end, we're going to bring in, we're using our V voter. We're going to bring in Precinct 8 Geraldine Williams, who has a question. And so at Town Meeting, we can be somewhat flexible with our V voter platform and our Zoom conferencing, video conferencing, as we seek to have people participate remotely. Good evening, once again, Ms. Williams.
Hello, this is a question that was on an earlier article that I didn't get to at the time and didn't want to interrupt later. But I just wondered, Article 6 was about the pilot agreement for the Hedges Pond Road Solar Array. And it said that it's $15,000 per kilowatt hour and a 2.5% increase. And I'm just curious whether it is possible to write an amendment that we request a larger payment, if that can be modified at all.
So again, I'm glad you asked the question now, and I'm glad you're bringing it up. I'm going to first go to Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. Not that I can't receive a motion to review, but perhaps Lynn, you might be able to comment on whether or not it's possible to change the amount of the payment. So Lynn Barrett is the Director of Finance. She's on our panel. If we can bring in Lynn Barrett for any comments she might have. But Ms. Williams, in the meantime, you're certainly welcome to email a proposed motion to amend. Lynn Barrett.
So Geraldine, the article gives us authorization to, well, the previous article that gave us authorization to negotiate a pilot. So the, the Principal Assessor and myself negotiate the pilot with the developer, and it's based on their cost and financial information that they give to us. So the amount that we determined was based on all of those values. So we, we wouldn't necessarily want to go back and increase it on them because we negotiated in good faith the two parties to come to that amount. And it's, it's very similar to how we've negotiated all the other agreements that we've done. We have probably about almost 15, I think, of them now.
So are they all for that amount of money, basically that same amount of money?
No, they're all different because it's based on the value of that particular, the, the costs associated with building that, the building the arrays. It's, it's all of their costs associated with that. So each one is very different from, from each other. Some of them are similar, some of them are the same amounts, but we just did one last fall, and that one was, was $20,000. So it really all depends on the information that's provided to us and, and what's negotiated.
Geraldine.
I thought I remembered a higher amount from, from last meeting, and that's why I was wondering why this one was less.
Geraldine, in listening to the comments from the Director of Finance, I'm inclined to say that I won't be accepting a motion to amend because really, Town Meeting has given authority to the town to negotiate. It's like some of the other articles we have, so that, you know, Town Meeting Members don't micromanage some of the functions of the Town Manager, or in this case, Director of Finance. You can vote it up or down as to whether you want to give that authority. But if you still have questions sent to me, I'll, I'll take a look at it. But that's kind of my reaction.
Nope, that's fine. I just, that explained a little more what, where it came from.
Any other questions?
I just thought if there was a potential to make a little more money, it would be good.
Thank you. And that completes the Town Meeting Preview. I'd like to thank all of you for joining us. And again, it'll be on replay. Good evening. I'm Steve Schruffle, Plymouth Town Moderator. Thank you for joining us.